All right, we'll call the meeting to order. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to welcome our residents and viewers to this regular meeting of January 11th, 2022. For those interested, and we have a bit of a crowd here tonight, we have agendas on the back podium. If you'd like to get one, we will be following the agenda as listed this evening. On the agenda tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one's going to go relatively quickly, and then we have one discussion item after that. So before we get into the public hearings, we have one housekeeping item to take care of, and that would be the minutes from our regular meeting of December 14, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No.
If not, is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. With that, then, we'll open up both public hearings at this time. Again, we'll handle them in order as shown on the agenda. The first public hearing is a preliminary and final plat for Vermillion Valley Development, and this will be a fairly quick one. Tony?
It will be. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Steph is asking that this planning, or this public hearing be continued to the February 8th, 2022, regular meeting. We still need additional time to review it. It will be within 60-day statutory review time period, so it shouldn't be an issue. We did just receive it about two weeks ago. So I did go ahead and set the public hearing just in case we were able to get the necessary review period done, but with the holiday and everything else, it just didn't happen. So then, the action that's requested this evening is to continue the public hearing to February 8th, 2022, regular Planning Commission meeting.
All right, thank you, Tony. And if you're here, if you got a notice and you're here for that public hearing, we apologize again. We will handle this at February 8th meeting. So with that, I'd look for a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Winchardt.
Yes.
Teskey.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Lado.
Yes.
Francis Chali.
Yes.
All right, our next public hearing, then, is a conditional use permit to allow a school within the B2 zoning district, which is a downtown business zoning district. The address is 115 Elm Street. The applicant is Wellington Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. As Chair Roddy had mentioned, this is a conditional use permit application to allow a school in the, what used to be the Family Fresh Grocery Store Building located at 115 Elm Street in the Farmington City Center. Great Oaks Academy, who is currently operating out of the Bethel's Rock Campus located at 630212th Street West, they are looking to relocate to that space. The subject property is currently owned by Amos Financial LLC, and the applicant for the CUP is Wellington Management, who is the contract purchaser of the property, which includes the old grocery store building as well as the retail strip center that is directly east of that main building. Wellington Management would lease the space to Great Oaks Academy if the CUP is approved. The subject property is Zone B2, which is our downtown business district, and school is listed as a conditional use within that zoning classification. Some background information on the Great Oaks Academy. This is a classical charter school built on the pillars of rigor, literature, wonder, and virtue. The school's mission is to provide students with a classical liberal arts education that is rigorous, literature-rich, wondrous, and virtuous. The vision is to graduate young adults who are fully prepared for the rigors of college and career, value truth, beauty, and goodness, possess a lifelong passion for learning, are active participants in their communities, and recognize the values of their contributions. According to the school's 2020-2021 annual report, the actual enrollment for the school during those years was 90 students in kindergarten through grade four. Representatives from Great Oaks Academy did indicate that they currently have 192 students in this year's class. The school projects enrollment to increase to 384 students by 2025-2026 school year, as indicated in that annual report. This would also include the adding of additional grade levels, which intend to become a K-12 school in the future. This report also indicated that the school had 28 staff people at that time as well. In your packet, we have a site plan that shows generally what they are looking to do onsite. All right, for orientation purposes, Elm Street is located here. First Street is located here. The grocery, or the building is currently located here with the parking lot that wraps around currently. The layout includes 18 classrooms along the outer perimeter of the building with cafeteria, administration office, and library towards the center of the building. The plan also indicates future expansion areas on the north end of the building as well. The other thing that this site plan does provide for or show is a fenced-in playground area of about 13,281 square feet. This would be on the south side of the building, located basically here, so adjacent to Elm The location of that play area would require the removal of 19 parking stalls. The plan does not identify the type or height of fencing that is proposed with the playground area. The location of the fence as proposed does extend almost entirely to the sidewalk that is adjacent to Elm Street, and is also adjacent to the site access that comes off of Elm Street as well. The fencing must not obstruct sightlines for vehicles entering or leaving the site at the Elm Street location, and bollards must be installed along the west, south, and east sides of the fenced-in playground area to provide added security and protection. A condition of approval will be that the applicant provide a more detailed plan for the playground area that provides information regarding the fencing that includes type and height, as well as shows the location of protective bollards around the outside of the fencing. Code does require one parking stall be provided for each classroom and one parking stall for every 30 students. The use as a school would require a total of 24 off-street parking stalls based off of the information found in the report. The property currently has 266 off-street parking stalls within its boundary, so includes all of the parking within the site as well. This number does not include the 19 stalls that would be removed for the playground area that I previously mentioned. The parking on the site does exceed the requirements for both the proposed school and the retail center. The one thing I do want to mention being that this is Zone B2. This site is exempt from our parking requirements. Either way, it still meets what the requirement would be if it was required, so I just wanted to point that out. Bus drop-off and pickup for the school would be on the east side of the building, near the front entrance, as you can see on the site plan there. The plan is for buses to come off of First Street, enter on the northern access, and then circle around, and then exit out on Elm Street. Six parking spaces are identified again towards the northern end of the building as parent drop-off and pickup as well, located right here. A condition of approval will be that the applicant complete the traffic study and provide the study and its recommendations to the city as well. We want to make sure that anything they do there is number one, safe, and if there are needed improvements, either onsite or at the accesses, that that is accounted for, so. As the Commission is aware, there are six criteria for approval of a conditional use permit, and I'll quickly go through those. The first one is the proposed use conforms to the district permitted and conditional use provisions and all general regulations of this title. As I'd previously mentioned, this is listed as a conditional use in the B2 zoning district. Two, the proposed use shall not involve any element or causing conditions that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or person, and shall comply with the performance standards listed below. Staff believes that it will not create any of those conditions listed above. Three, the proposed use shall be constructed, designed, sighted, oriented, and landscaped to produce harmonious relationship of buildings and grounds to adjacent buildings and properties. The use will occupy an existing building. The applicant must supply the city with a detailed plan for the playground area to ensure the above criteria is met. Number four, the proposed use shall produce a total visual impression and environment which is consistent with the environments of the neighborhood. Again, staff does feel that it meets those requirements. Five, the proposed use shall organize vehicular access and parking to minimize traffic congestion in the neighborhood. The site will utilize existing site accesses along with existing parking areas. A traffic study must be completed and submitted to the city upon completion. And then lastly, number six, the proposed use shall preserve the objectives of this title and shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The use is listed as a conditional use in the P2 zoning code, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So therefore, the action that is requested this evening is to approve the conditional use permit, allowing a school to occupy the existing building located at 115 Elm Street, contingent upon the following. Number one, the submission and approval of all building and fire permits as deemed necessary to establish the use. Two, the completion and submission of a traffic study to the city for the proposed use at this location. Three, a detailed plan for the playground area must be submitted to the zoning officer. For review and approval, the plan must detail the use of the area, including fence height and materials, location of bollards around the perimeter of the fence, and any lighting that may be added for this area. And then four, a signed permit shall be submitted and approved for any exterior signage that may be placed on the building or the site.
All right, thank you, Tony. There are several representatives of both Great Oaks Academy and the applicant. Do they want to add to the discussion or the staff report before we get into comments or questions? I don't see anybody jumping around to it. Nobody, nobody's getting up, so I think we'll allow them to speak first. You state your name, please.
My name is Reed Robinson. I'm with Winther Johnson Robinson. We're the architect. I'm just here to answer questions. I don't think I can fill anything at this point.
All right, if you'd stay available, then we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I am Ally Newton with Wellington Management as the applicant, and I just want to note that the traffic study is already in process, and we expect results within a few weeks.
You know, Ally, I had a question. Could you walk us through and explain the traffic study, what that'll entail?
Yeah, we worked with both, I believe Samantha and Tony here on the scope of work with the traffic study, and I know our traffic engineer has talked directly with them and was guided directly by staff to ensure that requirements were being met with the scope of work that was engaged. So I think it's six different intersections that will be counted, and I believe that work was completed last week, so.
Will it just be a traffic count, or what else would it be?
Nope, they'll be doing analysis based on the accounts that were gathered over a period of time, as well as look at what traffic was there when Family Fresh was in business.
Okay. All right, thank you. If you'd stay available too, please, we'd appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, this is a public hearing. Again, I'd ask that you come up to the podium to speak and state your name and address, please, for the record. Would anybody like to start? Yes, sir.
Good evening. David Marsh, 204 First Street. I live directly behind the proposed location.
Good evening, Mr. Marsh.
Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Yep.
So a couple points of contention here. Number two, you say that it won't cause a hazardous situation, and it meets the requirement. If you've ever dealt with a liquor store, they have crazy dance moms at 4:30 in the afternoon trying to get their kids to dance score, a post office that runs over your mailbox on a daily basis, and if you've ever dealt with any of the Farmington schools and dropped your kids off or tried to pick them up, I live directly behind that store. So to have access to this whole facility from the north up on First Street, what do you think that's going to do to my road and First Street and Elm Street at the corner there at about 3:30 in the afternoon or 4 o'clock, or at 7:30 in the morning? Going to be a huge amount of traffic. So I don't have a problem with the school. I think the school's good, but I think if you, if we're going to do a traffic study, then I think that we need to look at high congestion times and monitor all of that. I believe there needs to be another access with a turn lane put in front of Verizon if you're going to do something, and I believe the cul-de-sac on First Street should not be the thoroughfare because it was never meant that way even way back in the day, and you know that from when Harms built that building that Mark and now the post office occupies. So I don't see a real big gain for me, except I see a giant loss for me. And anybody else that lives on that corner, I know there's only four of us, right? I'm the one property owner that actually lives there, right? And we have an alley that access six more houses. What does that do every morning and every afternoon to that corner? Makes it an absolute disaster. You couldn't hardly even turn out when, now that the dance studio's gone, the liquor store's gone, it's going back to a nice, quiet street like it should have been, minus the post office running over my mailbox on a three-week, four-week. They've done it three times.
Have they?
Since they've moved into that building, they've hit my, and I'm halfway down the road.
Well, we trained them to go and hit mailboxes.
Well, but we know how, we know how parents are trying to get their kids when they're late to get, pick them up from school or late getting to school and trying to get to another function after school, boy scouts, girl scouts, hockey, baseball, anything else. Now I'm going to have school buses. I used to have to deal with the trucks and I'm more foreign, those guys, I would go over and talk to them because they'd sit at 4:30 in the morning in front of my house idling, waiting to unload. We got that worked out. I tried to be a good neighbor. I dealt with the trash for 20 years. Again, tried to be a good neighbor. You know what you and I've been through in zoning in different situations. So again, I've always been a good steward of the community. I still live here. I work here. My kids go to school here. One graduated last year. I don't have a problem with the school, for say, but, you know, the fence out on Elm Street right to the curb, that's going to cause a sightline issue. What about Dr. Harms' building? Where's his, where's his tennis going to park? His residents and people coming to that facility that he's renting now? You know, their parking lot just got really small. You know, that's going to be off-street parking now in front of our houses on that street and people driving down the street on top of all those other scenarios. So you guys understand, nothing against anybody trying to make a school, but, you know, you look at any Farmington school or any school that's in any suburb, they're in the middle of their property, right? They have green land and they have parking space. They have green space all the way around those schools. They're not right next to, you know, kids playing all day outside in different times for gym classes. That is going to disrupt the neighborhood, right? My main fear is the traffic. The traffic's going to be disaster. Come at 3 o'clock, and I challenged you before, come at 4 o'clock, we'll have a cup of coffee, and then we'll try to turn left off of First Street at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. You can't do it. So with that being said, you know, I believe the traffic study needs to be reconfigured, and I'd love to see a turn lane because I know it's going to go through, but I'd love to see a turn lane, another access, not First Street, in there, because if they came in, if I could use your map, Tony?
Yeah, you can point.
So if they, if you put an access over here, and they come in, they come in this way, and they travel their bus loop, and their entrance and exit is this way, they're not such a big deal with it. But that alleviates all of that extra traffic that goes down First Street that was never entailed for that. Does that make sense?
It does, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Marsh, you have been a good steward, and you and I have spoken here many times over the last number of years.
25 years.
Yeah, at least. Can you tell me that little connection off the cul-de-sac? Is that, how is that road condition right there?
It's about, you and I can maybe get a four-wheeler in a car like this. It was never, I don't know how it got through when Dr., when Wardman built that building for Mark, because it was a dead-end cul-de-sac, and when they did, got rid of the grain elevator, and they built that building, all of a sudden, that was paved. I came home one day and it was paved, and it's about as, you know, probably 16, 18 feet wide, so it doesn't even meet the state minimum requirement to try to get a fire truck down that road.
And I agree with you that the traffic study will be essential. That's why when, when Ms. Newton was here, we'd ask her on the thing. And, you know, we may have to ask them to do some additional parts of that study. Commissioner Francis Chali.
Mr. Marsh, since you're right on the spot there, how often does that corner from First into the cul-de-sac get underwater for when the river floods?
That very rarely, because everything's sloped, and it takes a lot for that to get there. Probably twice in 25 years I've seen that corner underwater. But what you run into is you've got everybody leaving the post office, and they go that way. Now, if you've got buses coming the other way on top of it, and you've got parents trying to bring kids into school, it's going to be a disaster. It was, it was bad enough with the grocery store, the liquor store, and the dance studio, right? The dance studio and I, we had numerous conversations. You know what? I don't, I'm sorry that your patrons are late getting them to dance class, and they pay a lot of money for it, but your mom doesn't need to do from, when they turn right onto First Street, they don't need to do 75 by the time they're going around that corner. You know, I have kids, and they're getting a little older, but I still have dogs, and, you know, again, it's my neighborhood. I chose to live here, and I would hope that we could come up with a different solution to how people are going to get in there. Because if they use their existing parking lot, so be it. They have all those. They're not taking any parking spots. It's just a matter of putting another entrance right in front of the Verizon store, and they wouldn't lose any of the parking spots in front of the retail, and they wouldn't lose any of their center parking spots. You just put a right-hand turn lane, eliminate the sidewalk in that section, put a right-hand turn lane so a bus can turn into there on the right. Can we slide this over, Tony? So right here, if they put a turn lane right there and turn in and come down here, and then loop around and do their drop-offs, it alleviates a ton of, ton of stress on First Street. And that corner. Because even if you're coming north on First Street from the other side and you're trying to turn left and right, it's a disaster in the afternoon. You know, it's not a normal intersection because you do have houses, you have hockey arena, you have Bachmann, you have all the retail or the commercial that's down there, and that's a busy, busy corner. Yeah, and the church.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night. Any other comments or questions? Lot of people here. Nobody's got anything? Mr. Richardson, you got anything? No, not now? Okay. All right, how about we do this? We'll bring it back to the table. We'll do some discussion. I will give you another opportunity when we're done. If you happen to have a comment or question after a period of time, we'll come back to you, okay? We'll start tonight with Commissioner Francis Chali.
Thank you. I like the idea of having this building occupied. Rooftop paying some sort of revenue to the city is always welcome. Mr. Marsh really took a lot of my thunder when he went through and talked about parking and traffic flows, and I would wonder, Tony, can we incorporate his suggestion into the traffic study and figure out feasibility and additional cost, if necessary, to make that occur?
We can certainly try to add something to the traffic study. The one thing I would caution as far as adding another access, that is a county road, and whether or not the county would even allow another access. That would be the caveat to that.
Because using that cul-de-sac in the back, which was never designed for it, you can just look at it and see how the curbing is set for it, really doesn't make a lot of sense to go through and allow it to be continued to use. I think that we need to go and ask the applicant and the architects to go through and look at that with a little finer detail and see if there's a way to work around it. I think I'll just leave it at that.
Anything else, Sean?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Teskey.
Yeah, I agree with John. I'm excited to see an opportunity for this building because it has sat vacant for quite a while, so it'd be nice to have some life downtown again, and some youth, actually, downtown, so I'm excited about that. I have concerns about the drop-off and pickup. I sit in the drop-off line and pick up every day, and I hate it. I get so stressed out about it. So the way this parking lot is set out, I'm wondering, you know, if we can't do any sort of turn-in lane, and then, I'm wondering if there's a way to somehow drive traffic through the parking lot, whether that's with, you know, guided arrows or something, just to help drive traffic through, so that you can have more queuing for pickup and drop-off? Because I think queuing is really where the problem comes up, is when you've got kids wanting to get out to parents' cars, and they just get stacked up. So that's something I would really want to consider and look at. The other thing as part of that traffic study, I don't know, Tony, are they looking at walk-up or, you know, like, access points for kids as they try to cross Elm Street at all? Because that's a major concern that I do have.
I don't know specifically, but that's something we can make sure that they take a look at.
Yeah. And whether it's just a crosswalk or a marked crosswalk somewhere adjacent to the school, and then looking at potential lighting to allow kids to walk across. I just don't want a situation like we saw at Egan. And then, the other question I had was with regard to the building itself. That building doesn't have really any windows except along the front. As the classrooms are kind of pushed to the exterior of the building, is there any opportunity to add glazing or glass to those exterior walls for, into the classroom? Do we have any idea on that as to what that looks like?
Reed Robinson again. Yes, we are planning on putting glazing all over classrooms on the perimeter.
Okay, so every room will have a glazing access point, too? Okay.
Yeah, I had asked the planning individual whether you wanted to see this, and maybe this would just help you a little bit, just as a visual here.
Oh, perfect.
I'll let you zoom in.
So there are quite a few exterior updates happening to that building, then?
Yeah.
As part of the proposal? Okay. I feel better about that.
Anything else, Krista?
No, that's it.
Commissioner Winchardt.
Yeah, I think, again, I don't want to rehash what's already been talked about, but Mr. Marsh makes good points. A couple of concerns that I have, the playground being in the front of the school there on Elm. Was there any thought to moving the playground to the back where the future expansion could be for the basketball court that's back there? I guess Elm's, looking at Elm Street and how busy it is and the number of semis and potential kids throwing balls over the fence.
So we've updated that plan a little bit. If you can zoom on a little bit. One of the things that has been requested of us by the school themselves is that this area right here, which is a north area that you're, I believe, referencing.
Yep.
It would be our intention to actually create that as a green space fenced for kid activity as well, child activity, and then still have this. The fence that you saw, I saw briefly on the rendering, is actually an open fence. It's not a, you know, solid fence at all. And so, in both cases, you would have that. So the activity would be on both sides of the building at this point.
Yeah, I guess my concern is having the playground at the front by a busy road would be obviously a lot safer in the back. And if you're having a fence with slots or holes in it, potential for the kid to go through the fence, is that possible? If it's not a chain link fence, it's just a...
No, it would be a slot, you know, a picket-type fence, and, you know, spacing is probably about four inches, something in that range, so probably not getting through there.
Sure. I guess my only concern is that balls and kids are in the front playing, and with much, as much traffic as on Elm and semis coming, the post office vehicles, of course, I'd rather see it in the back where it's safer to see. And I agree with the parent drop-off pickup. No parent at 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning is going to pull into one of those spots and then back up. So I think that needs to be reconfigured. Again, I do it on a daily basis myself, and at no time do you have the power or even the authority to pull in and back out without... the authority to pull in and back out without the safety of your kids or the kids for the school. So I don't know how we could reconfigure that if we could shorten the, the, the turn on the north corner, northeast corner. And allow the parents just to kind of slide down along the bus line. Um, but I don't see that as a very effective way to parent drop-off. Um, and especially, uh, like the schools reported, the numbers are gonna get bigger, um, or the kids are gonna increase. I think that's gonna be a real concern, uh, for parent drop-off at that point. Is there any safety measures, uh, inside the school as far as the entrance, uh, windows? Um, you know, we all know unfortunately active shooters and school incidents happen. And there are protective measures to take at an entrance to a school and I'm just wondering if anything, uh, if that's part of the plan at all or anything like that.
We haven't actually developed that far at this point in time, so. But the intention is to secure, make this building as secure as possible.
Sure.
Uh, there is a, a vestibule setup on the front so we can have a double lock on that scenario, release, that type of thing.
Sure. And I would just, you know, again, it's not part of the plan right now, but there are a lot better options than a double lock nowadays. But no, I think it's a great idea that, I think the building, it's great that it's gonna be occupied or potentially be occupied. Um, let me check my notes here, see if I got anything else. I guess, Tony, has anybody talked to the businesses that are there already? I, I know nobody's come tonight to speak, but I'm just wondering.
I did send notices. Um, I haven't heard from anybody.
Okay.
Um, but I did send the notices to, to all those businesses.
Sure.
So.
And I, I think, you know, again, the point's been made, but I do have concerns even with the post office and the trucks and the buses coming and going through there. But so if the traffic study could figure out something more detailed, that'd be great. That's it.
Good questions, Phil. None of them surprise me with your law enforcement background. Commissioner Laito.
Um, I just wanna kind of add on because I agree with what everyone else is saying. Um, I did do a drive-by on my way in here tonight, so I did come down because I've never been that way onto First. I did come around the building. My question is, I don't know if you can see what looks like it might be a car down at the end on the left-hand side. It seems that that part of the entrance has two, you know, you can go left or right. But there's a median in the middle, you can only go in one way. So maybe eliminating that median and widening that and considering whether or not in addition to talking to the, um, business owners, but would the applicant be willing to reconfigure the rest of the parking lot based on traffic study for those businesses as well? So I would propose that there's a lot of extra parking there that I think you could reconfigure in some way. That would give you extra ability to switch the, the traffics, the traffic flow from First Street back farther into where it currently is, if that makes sense.
To the Elm Street access?
Correct, yeah. That would be my suggestion anyways, because it seems like there's a lot of additional parking. And I don't know how much of that is actually used for the businesses that are currently there. Or if it could be reconfigured, if they'd be willing to reconfigure that at all.
Certainly try to work with the applicant.
Okay, yeah, that would be, you know, and my other concern until I drove by was, you know, with the proximity to the river and to the, the railroad tracks. Um, just making sure again that nobody can get out to the either of those areas was another concern I had. But other than that, I'm, you know, I think everything else looks really good. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Leon. I do have questions either for the architect or for the school itself. And, you know, they're, they're pertaining to, why are you coming here? Why are you moving from where you're at? Yeah, can you go up there, please?
I'm Paul McGlynn, I'm the director of Great Oaks Academy. Um, the reason we're moving is because our growth uh, is outpacing the space that we're in. And, uh, our hosts, Bethel's Rock, have been very gracious in letting us be there for two years. But, um, they don't have space to continue leasing forward. And for us to continue prospering as a school, we have to grow. So we actually found this opportunity, uh, through Wellington's, um, good graces. And, um, it's wonderful for our school and I hope wonderful for the community. Um, but that's why we're moving, we, we need space.
Okay, good. Have one or two more. Um, as you look at this, is there anything that you see in this school and design that you say it's missing? Boy, I wish we could have that.
Uh, you know, about ten acres of Greenland around it would be great. I, I don't see that as possibility. Uh, no, um, I think the traffic study kept coming up and I want to address that, that we think a lot about that. Um, so any bus traffic moving through that, we always time so that the buses will get there for pickup or drop-off before. Particularly pickup, we're, have a little bit more control over, so the buses will get there before our parent pickup. We get the, all the students loaded onto the buses and out, then we start parent pickup after that. Um, and so somebody rightly said, no, we're not gonna have any parent pull into that parking spot and pull back for parent pickup. It'll be a continuous flow, uh, moving around, so. And I did, uh, the neighbors, I, I think you made a really good point. It, I, I can understand your concerns about having a lot of traffic there. We will definitely, uh, work with Wellington and, and your neighborhood to try and make it as, you know, peaceful and quick as possible. And we do let out a little earlier than, um, rush hour, about two, two forty-five. So that helps us a little because we, we don't hit the main rush hour. Um, but yeah, understandable concerns, we are looking at it and we, we take that into consideration to try and be good neighbors, so.
Could you give us your hours of operation?
Uh, currently we are opening at eight AM and, uh, two forty-five is our bus. Um, and then parent pickup begins right thereafter.
Nighttime activities?
Uh, currently we don't have any nighttime activities. Once in a while, we have board meetings, we have some community events. We have parent-teacher conferences, but there's, they're, they're not consistent.
Okay. And, and in the write-up, it mentioned possibly if, if it works out to expand to K through twelve, is that correct?
Correct.
Where would you put nine through twelve in this design here?
So if you look at right over here where the green spaces.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna definitely enjoy that green space for the time we can have it, for the, a few years. Uh, the proposal from Wellington is that they will build our nine through twelve in that area as well as a gymnasium. So it's gonna be, my understanding.
You wanna come forward or read it? Okay.
I'll just, I'll just take a stab at it. It's gonna be two stories, uh, there. And so basically our high school and gymnasium will be right where that green space is. Uh, and at that point, we'll start using, uh, the park a lot, so.
Okay, um, your busing company is, do you, what?
Marshall Lines.
Marshall, you do use Marshall, okay. Alright, good deal. If you could stand back, I got a couple of questions for Tony. Tony, uh, if, could they expand in that green space? Is that in the flood zone?
It's something we'd have to look at. There may be setback issues from the river that, uh, we'd have to, uh, look at. Um, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly what those would be, but I do believe that there might be some setback issues.
And I don't either, but, but if this does proceed on and they should know ahead of time so that they're not surprised later on. Tony, if you could slide your, your thing, and I don't know if it shows, I'll call it Doc, Doc Harms old building, but I think it's a counselor now. You know, that's gonna change because they had access two ways. Are they still gonna have adequate parking? I mean, it looks like it's pretty big there. I, I, my sense is they're still gonna have adequate parking for the, what they're using it for.
More than likely.
Okay.
Um, I didn't do the calculation based off of that particular use, but again, it's still in the B two, so they're not technically required to have any. Um, but on the
Tony, can I say something about the B two and not required?
Absolutely.
It is, it, it may not be in the code, but it is still needed.
Well, absolutely.
And so if it's needed, to me, it's required. And I kind of agree, I, I, I'm hoping this doesn't display some of the parking there onto the street. I, I remember that lot being fairly large, it must be a dozen or better.
There's thirteen in this area here and then they do have, I wanna say, four or five additional.
They do. If this does proceed on, could somebody reach out to them and make sure that they're aware of it? I mean, they're, they, they probably got the public notice, but impacts may not, may, uh, may not jump out at them. And they may, you know, it's, make sure that it's gonna be fine for them.
Absolutely.
Can I address that just a second?
Absolutely.
Property line for the property that we're talking about is right here.
Yep.
And there's currently a, an easement for this parking area right here.
Yep.
And that's the extent of what rights they have on any of this parking at this point in time, as well as their parking that's right here.
Alright, that's fine then. Tony, do you know enough about the easement on First Street to explain that?
Uh, I think what was, uh, approved when, um, the building was built here is that they obtained an easement to, uh, basically access, uh, this portion of this site.
Okay.
And then, uh, to provide this for their patrons of that building.
So, and I wanna say that was in the early nineties that that was granted.
I remember it and I, you know, I look back and, and for those that live in the area. And, and I know the city center was a great development. I, I just kinda wish that the turn lanes would have been put in off and, and the center turn lanes. That would have made traffic so much simpler in the area, uh, safer maybe is a better word than simpler, but, but, uh, anyway, it, it didn't. So we deal with it now. Um, I appreciate it. Um, I guess my next statements aren't really questions, they're more statements and I haven't forgotten, we'll get back to everybody here. Um, but really the question in front of the commission tonight is, is this property reasonable location for a school? You know, Tony pointed out several conditions that need to be met, you know, does it conform with the other properties in the area? You know, is it consistent? It, you know, a school is a, a bit of a stretch, but, but I think it does, you know? But the big one, how will vehicle, traffic and parking be addressed? That's kinda, I think, what we're stumbling over here. And looking for, you know, some better answers than we got. Um, but this building's been vacant now for several years and our hopes of filling it with what was previously in it. I don't think it's gonna materialize, but it's not without the lack of trying. I mean, we've tried to get, you know, that building filled and filled the way it was for this community. Um, and a school may not be my first choice either for this property. But I, I feel the proposed plan along with some of the improvements that we've talked about, the commission and our residents and and I, I, hopefully the architect has taken notice that I, I, I think this site could work for a school. I really do. Um, you know, their building layout looks good, the classroom's fit, you know, they've accounted for future growth. That was one of my big questions. Um, you know, and something that we talk about the additional traffic, but you gotta remember our business people in town. This additional traffic will help support the businesses both in this area and in our downtown area. And that's a big plus. Um, but there are some things that I, I, I think needs to make this a, a safer, maybe a better plan. We've talked about it. Um, needs to be safer for the residents first. We need to complete this traffic study. One of the first questions that we ask is what that consists of. I'm, I think if I get the opinion of the commission and, and a lot of comments from our residents is, let's expand it, let's make sure the traffic's done right. Let's make sure we look at, you know, Ingress, Egress, quality of roads, line of sites, everything and anything, parking inside there. Um, so Tony, what we can do, I mean, I, I don't wanna go out and, and put, um, ideas into mind right now. Because I think, you know, that's not the way to do it. I think they should be able to look at it. They're real smart people and they should be able to say, here's what needs to be done. Mr. Marsh, I know that corner's been bad. It's been bad for years. Every time I've driven that, I worry about blowing a tire. So I, I think, you know, if nothing else, that kinda stuff, maintenance needs to be done if it's gonna be used in that way. Um, so we need to complete that. Um, you know, Highway fif- uh, County Road fifty or Elm Street, whatever you wanna call it. It, it's a busy road. I mean, it, it can be a troubling road and so we need to be able to make this a safe area if, um, you're dealing with students here. And if you're gonna put the playground right there, um, you need to make that a safe playground. You know that better than anybody else. I mean, that's priority one for your school is the safety of your students. I mean, so again, that, that's another area. Um, you know, anytime you start putting bollards around there, that, that indicates, you know, it's, there's traffic in the area. So be aware of that. Um, so Tony, I look for, um, kind of a, uh, expanding the traffic study.
Sure.
Um, I mean, having some input into it, but I, I, I think a school would work here. I think it'd be a great addition to the area. Um, I'm, I'm certainly not gonna support it, so. Alright, I mentioned there would be another opportunity for our residents to ask comments or questions. Now is your time. Mr. Marsh.
Getting old, gotta put my glasses on, so bear with me here.
Yeah, you got me both, man.
I, I, uh, I implore you to put another access and not use First Street. Because if they're already at a hundred and seventy students and then by twenty-four, twenty-five, they're gonna be three hundred and eighty-four. Let's just break that in half, two kids per car, right? How many vehicles are gonna be stacked up on First Street around here? I mean, honest to goodness.
No doubt.
Whether, whether the bus goes separate and the cars don't, I'm gonna have cars in front of my house every single day. Twice a day at a minimum, then I'm sure you're gonna have food trucks and milk trucks and everybody delivering to the back dock, right? You're gonna utilize that facility that's back there?
Currently, we're not gonna have.
Okay, and they're gonna go through the front door then? Typically? Okay, I, I'm just asking a question because that's an issue I had to deal with for years.
It's because our, it's a matter of catered meals that are brought into our kitchen.
Okay.
There may be a back door, but it's not gonna be any large, huge truck.
Right. My, my whole concern is then you go to nine, you go, you go from, you know, K to twelve. And it's a three hundred and eighty-four students and if we don't have a secondary access, like, I guess common sense tells me to, even if it's not a turn lane. But if it's a one-way in and a one-way out, you've gotta flow through this whole area.
Yeah.
You know, it's flipped up here. Yeah, you know, you, you come in and you come around and you go this way. It, it's a one-way in, one-way out and that alleviates a ton of issue for anybody. And, and that's what I really, really, really concerned with.
And that, that certainly sounds a good idea, you know, uh, the city planner Tony mentioned, County Road, we'll do what we can working with them. Um, they're a little reluctant to put multiple entrance, entrances and onto County Roads. Especially that close to railroad tracks, but we won't exclude it. I mean, that's part of the traffic study. That's why I don't wanna put some preconceived notions in there that you have to do this. Let's let the experts see what works best.
How long a traffic study are you guys doing, if I may ask? I know there was a camera out for two days, on the two coldest days. But hold on, how, how long's the traffic study going for? I think it was done for three days, I saw the cameras up. I'd like to see it for a month.
You think it's done already?
I believe it is.
Well, it, it, alright, well, well.
But, but if, if, if you expand it, right, we're in the middle of winter.
Yeah, right, right.
People don't travel like they do in the summer or in the spring and we have to take that into account.
Some of us don't, but yeah.
Right, a lot of people hibernate, right? But, 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 you know, it, common sense should prevail in this situation. And, and again, I don't, I want something to go in the building too. I've had to live across an empty building and deal with the rodents and everything else and but I also have concern with, you know, kids and added noise and everything else, because it's gonna be right across the street from my house.
Yeah.
Um, as well as the other people that live on the corner and then the other side. They've gotta deal with that added noise for the playground in the front. I agree, I'd love to see the playground in the back. I think it's a safer situation, it'd be quieter. You know, a ball's gonna fly over the fence, I have boys, you know, that stuff flies and it goes out in Elm Street and now you create another accident. Look, look at, look at the scenarios all involved, please. That's all I implore you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Yes, sir.
Nick Donnelly, I live on Elm and I use First Street every day because Elm is so busy. I guess I just wanted to say I agree with David, but I also think that you're gonna congest people trying to get into the post office per se at three or four o'clock. I don't, I guess I don't see how that's gonna help the business. People trying to get in and out of there.
Yeah, you know, I, I, the school lets out about that time. Yeah, there might be some cross-traffic, I agree with you. Mr. Donnelly, so when you say you've come down on First Street, you, you come out the alley then?
I do.
Okay.
That's just all I wanted to add.
Alright, thank you, sir.
The school plan on opening?
We have a question on when the school is planning to open. Would it be, what's your timeline for opening?
Who cares? I got a question, yeah.
It's fall, okay. Go ahead, sir.
I'm right on one hundred Elm Street, I'm Jim Alvey.
What's your name?
Jim Alvey. I'm right on the corner of First and Elm. And, uh, for starters, I just wanna make sure that they do a little bit more of a traffic study because that wasn't a traffic study. And they need to take into consideration of all the box trucks that are coming down First Street. And they need to take into consideration of all the box trucks that are coming down First Street, the semis, the FedEx trucks, all the people in this church that they let have, the parking lot back there that have always using this for overflow parking, filling up First Street. I've been there for almost thirty years, watched kids almost get hit, skateboards get run over. You guys need to start really thinking seriously, but did you take into consideration, what are you gonna do in wintertime? Where's all the snow gonna go? You know, if you're gonna put a playground here or there, you fill up spots with the big piles of snow and different spots by the liquor store where it was, up front by where Harms was. That's something you need to take into consideration. You can't throw that down by the river and let it flow in there. That's a designated trout river. There's a lot of things you need to think about. A school, yeah, it might be great, but maybe it won't be either. Where's all the tax money gonna go? Do we gotta pay for that now too? And who's gonna take care of all these roads on First Street that are getting beat up already? I'm paying a ton of taxes for all these trucks being used on it. I'm getting nothing out of it. You guys gotta, you need to think about that. Anybody think about that with the snow removal?
Yeah.
It's a problem as it is already this winter.
You've you've been in your, at your location for a while.
A long while.
Yep, and I remember they did pile some snow there.
A lot of snow there.
Yeah, where they were doing it from the lot. Um, that is something that I guess the the owner of the entire property will have to address and deal with.
Yeah, because it's gonna be a problem. I do disagree with Mr. Marshall on one thing because I have watched a lot of flooding going on in that corner. He's was flooded out a couple times. The whole park gets flooded out and moves that way.
Yeah, the park does. Does it get that far though? I know the park does.
I've seen it get that far many times when I've been living there. You just gotta think about the traffic with the kids in that river. You know how badly that's already gotten contaminated. There, anybody brought that up to the DNR and stuff on that school's gonna be put there with all that? No, they didn't, I bet.
How would that be, explain that. How would that be different than when the grocery store was there?
Because you're gonna have how many kids there running around? Where are you gonna put the playground? Stuff gets thrown in them. Kids aren't clean. You know garbage goes all over. There's so much garbage there now without anything there.
You're talking trash then. Okay, I see. You know, I I will consider them a good Samaritan and and a good part of that and they'll clean up their trash, right? Right? Yeah, I I'm not worried about that. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Richardson? Sorry about that.
Bob Richardson, thirty-five Elm Street. Lived there since, for fifty years since I was born. That city center, those properties were bought. There were seven houses there and the Austin Products were, was where Verizon Wireless was. That was a CDA HR or HRA project in the early nineties. Those homeowners sold willingly for the city center. And it's commercial, it's a retail. In this development, I watched their Zoom meeting. We have neighbors that their kids attend to that school. Antonio's, his first name, was straight across the street from him. He probably informed the group to build there. That store's been sitting empty two years. And if you say nobody's been interested in that store, you can ask Mr. Whibley and Samantha there. There's companies from all over the country that wanna come redevelop that, but they're scared of Hy-Vee because the city did a did a special process for Hy-Vee, so everybody does not wanna come to Farmington. There's, there's groups interested in rebuilding that store and getting it back online. It's retail. And Wellington is buying this property to keep the, the retail going. And eventually, how, where are they gonna expand after three hundred students? Are they gonna build another building over here and put a tunnel? They gotta keep that easement going to the post office. They're not done after this building. They're gonna keep moving, moving, moving. That property was designed without drainage ditches, water retention ponds. As you watch the water right now, it goes right down that little driveway. The reason why they didn't put a permanent driveway in the county probably wouldn't allow it. You can't put permanent curbs in the flood lane. And the county, I worked for Dakota County Parks for thirty years. The county is not gonna allow you to park turn lanes there. You see, six weeks ago, we had a grandfather here talking about the stoplights owned at the school that have been there for twelve years. We need a stoplight at First Elm. It's never gonna happen.
Mr. Richardson.
You can't have a school on retail with the bar across the street and the church. The liquor store moved for a reason because of traffic flow, because there's no retail there. That retail center is just holding on by its, by its bootstraps. They they plan to keep expanding on the site and coming back to your, your group and keep expanding, expanding, expanding. It's only four acres. What is a high school on or, there's open land everywhere to, all the way to Highway fifty. Just buy it or expand it. The current site there are at, just do a deal with Bethel Rock and expand there. Pay them the lease. Mr. Wellington's group can add on to that church and they have guaranteed income. They just, charter schools cannot own property in the state of Minnesota after year five. It's a known fact. It's on their Zoom meeting. So until year five, they can't officially own property. That's why they're renting or leasing. And to give that building back online by September, even the professionals, they're pushing it. That's.
Mr. Richardson, are you, are you against the school going in there? Are you against the traffic or?
The traffic is just insane.
The traffic is what your issue is?
And I know the county, like Tony was saying, you're not gonna have, be able to have a turn lane that far. Union Pacific owns, we had our lottery survey. The property line is like twenty feet behind that, that uh, strip mall. The rest is Union Pacific.
From the old railroad.
You're never gonna put a turn lane on there right away that's gonna be there for a hundred, two, three hundred years.
Yeah, you got that and the transmission line back there now, so.
Probably, yeah. By the traffic flow, if they could put a stoplight or something, but that that back driveway was just a patch and it's totally destroyed. The trees from the city parks, they're falling over the road currently. It's just a driveway. It's not a thoroughfare.
I know what you're talking about.
That's all we have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, Katie Porter. Did you need my address?
No, you're fine.
Okay, just a couple items to note. Um, I do have three of my five children do attend Great Oaks Community or Great Oaks Academy. Um, amazing community of people, very respectful, very clean. Um, a a few things to note, just as we strive to make Farmington a destination city, just with things going on in society, I think we need to note the fact that there are gonna be needs for alternative education options. We have a a booming population growth. We've had, you know, how many Platts um, and new homes that we've approved and there's gonna be a lot of young families moving in, not necessarily looking to be in a public school system. Um, even ours are kinda split half and half. I've got one at public and one at charter and then our younger son hopefully would be able to continue with that as they grow. Um, another thought with uh, the the um, cornerstone childcare, just a few blocks east of that property. Um, I believe something they did for safety was along Elm, they did that privacy fence. And then on the the north side of their property, they put the chain link fence, um, just for visibility and that backed up kinda to where Farmington Gymnastics Center is. So, um, I've sat waiting for my child to be done with gymnastics and kinda watched, okay, what does that look like, right? Is there, is there privacy? Is there safety? And absolutely with the privacy fence. So I'd propose that being an option for Elm. I know that's not like a an aesthetic, aesthetically appealing option, um, but just something to think about, right? Um, the condition of the building, I mean, it was, you know, when Spartan and Nash came in there, they completely gutted it. It's not, it's not sitting there waiting to be a grocery store. Um, and so a a couple of years from now, we're, we're looking at demolition of the building. And so if we are sitting here, we've, you know, talked to several other, um, and and unfortunately, there have been market, market analysis studies done as far as a grocery store here in Farmington, and I do not believe we have specific interest. Correct me if I'm wrong, Samantha and Tony, but I don't believe we have specific interest in that building at this time or that location whatsoever.
We have had some interest in that building, but that is the hesitancy is, to put in a grocery store, you have to guarantee so much income per square feet. And right now, they would be okay, but if a Hy-Vee were to open, it would drop it down. And then if an Aldi were to open, it would drop it down even more. So with the domino effect of those businesses, whoever were to go in there if that were to happen, they wouldn't be able to succeed. And so that's why nobody has actually gone in there yet, is that is their fear.
Right, so I I think that's, you know, i- it's kinda that double-edged sword, right? I mean, certainly residents brought up very valid concerns. Um, I have some of those same concerns, especially with traffic analysis you guys brought up. The fact that Elm is County Road fifty, which is obviously a county road. We understand how that works. Um, I don't know, at this time, Great Oaks Academy has two buses. Um, I don't know three buses, excuse me. Um, and so of course, that might, uh, that's obviously going to increase, right? But in the timeframe that we have with that um, population growth and the the busing growth, do we have time to, you know, bring in Commissioner Slavik and start having that discussion about what that might look like? Or what's the future plan for that, that plot or that, you know, that building, right? What is, what else does that look like? Does it look like demolition? Um, in discussion, I I had talked to Rich at Quickship and Tony at Wings. Um, and I think they're kind of at the point where they're feeling like if if anything could go in there just to bring in traffic, we would really appreciate it. So again, that double-edged sword, right? I understand it's not a quick fix for everybody, but bringing in some of those business owners. Again, the liquor store is out of their synergy, is out of that, that area. Um, as far as some of the safety concerns, we do have two, maybe three of our Farmington Police Department um, police officers that have children at Great Oaks Academy, and one of them has already expressed interest to me to personally come in and talk to the Wellington group about what some of these safety concerns, because we talked to Bethel's Rock about some of those for this year as well. Given heightened concern, obviously, with some of these things that are going on and just having school canceled, certainly something that we need to think about. Um, so again, I totally agree with both the commission and the residents' concern about the traffic analysis. Um, if we could dive deeper into that, I know you guys, specifically Wellington, is on a time constraint, right? Because if we're gonna start this project and be complete by August when school starts, that can be a little challenging too. And so I think if if they're willing to continue discussion with Sam and Tony, you know, there are options available. So I just wanna make sure I brought up some of those points to you guys in discussion because I know if this gets tabled, it may we may look at another month before there's a decision made, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. You offer a unique perspective on this, so. Any other comments or questions? This will be your last opportunity since we'll bring it back and and we are gonna make a decision this evening, one way or the other. Um, so I see nobody. All right, Commissioners, in front of the Commission.
Again, I agree.
You know, if I didn't know you so well, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, you know how it goes. You know, someone says something, that thing's popping in my head and just one of those. And and I I agree with your analysis on the grocery store, but to your point, Sam, is we can't make a vote tonight on a what-if. What if Aldi comes? What if Hy-Vee comes? That was always meant to be a grocery store. Nothing against the school. Not, not opposed to the school. I'm opposed to that the building isn't ideal for it. It's not in a great location. And we're trying to take and and make something, you know, there, there's a lot of open space, like Bob said, throughout the county and throughout the local area that would serve better needs for a school, even the current facility, if they could work a deal to do that. But that was never designed to be a school, so we're really trying to put a s-, you know, a a square block in a round hole and we're trying to make it fit right now. You know, we can do all the traffic studies in the world, but ideally, if if you're at three hundred and eighty-four kids in two years, three years, right? We're three hundred and eighty-four kids. They have three buses. Now they're gonna have ten. How many of those parents drive their kids? That's another hundred cars. High schoolers are gonna drive themselves. That's even that much more car traffic. And if we not, and there isn't that much green space on the backside that I see personally, right? I I build houses and remodels. I don't see where you're gonna get K-12 in that facility or the current space unless you move out into the parking lot or you go across where where the current retail facility is. And if that's what you guys decide you want that area to be as a school, then fine, let's reconfigure it as a school completely. Let's not just try to put a Band-Aid on it. Do you get my point?
I do, and you know.
I mean, there's gonna be five, six hundred kids in in there in ten years.
Yeah, and and if I can take from your stance, we're not dealing with what else. We're dealing with the, the applicant, application in front of us tonight, which is a school. So we're not sitting here saying, you know, I wish we had this and there, that and there. We're not dealing with that.
Sure.
You know, I I think it's an opportunity to fill the building that's been vacant for a long time and to help support our businesses that are in this and in our downtown.
But you also have to support the community, the residents.
I do, and and do I have concerns about traffic flow? Absolutely. Do I have concerns about the safety of our, of the students there with the, with the playground right there? Absolutely. And that's why if this proceeds, and they, there are both conditions that are, that the the city planner mentioned, we're gonna have those researched much more thoroughly than they are. So, and that hopefully will address and answer a lot of questions that residents have. I mean, this, I've spoken with a lot of you residents over the last many, many years, and you always come with great questions and on an open mind, and just as you have tonight. I mean, I've been at public hearings where there's closed minds and and the residents don't care to listen. You, you residents from that area of this community have always listened, have always accepted, and have always said, we're gonna make this a better place.
Well, part of it's just the situation we're in. We're in no man's land.
Well.
No, nobody ever wanted that little corner to be what it was in the first place, and you and I both know that. And and we're stuck where we are for now, and that's fine. And and you guys have done right in recent memory, right? And and I appreciate those things. And I wanna be a good, I wanna be a good neighbor to these guys and I wanna be a good, good uh, resident of the city. But I also have concerns of what's I gonna do for my property value in ten years when I go to sell?
And and you know, you had the same, you you asked me the same question years ago when there was a high-rise gonna be blazer. Remember that?
Yep.
And then other times you've, you've said, when the rezoning, you had them same questions for me. And look at it.
Right.
You're, you're, you're still on top of it.
Well, I'm still here. I haven't gone anywhere. You're stuck with me for a while, Derek, but I, just, just think long and hard and make sure these conditions are are set and shown, whatever you decide. That, that's all I ask.
Yep, I will, and I I appreciate the you, the residents coming out, the support from the school. You know, it's nice when you are able to ask questions and get answers from the right people. And the residents hear the same thing that we hear, so we appreciate that. Appreciate you coming. I'm gonna bring it back to the table. Did you have a question, sir? Yep, come on up here.
My name's Steve Close, and I live on Fifteenth Street, and I just wanted to say, I know we have some issues with the traffic and things like that that have come up, we've seen tonight, and I have faith that those will be addressed. And it's gonna take a little bit, you know, coming together on both sides, obviously. But one thing I wanted to make touch base on is, my son attends the school and I volunteered out there several times. The one thing that I can say is that the school's organization and the way that they have the students um, participate and and just, I don't want to sound negative, but the control they have over the students is second to none. I wish I had it with my son, you know, kids. But the organization that they use in drop-off and pickup is second to none. And I know that there will be more people that'll be picking up kids and there'll be that. But I have faith that the school will have an organizational plan that will handle that and they will try to keep that congestion down to a minimum. So I just wanted to put that forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Rick Nelson. Um, I'm here, actually, I've worked with Great Oaks Academy as their broker for the last couple of years as they've been getting started in those kinds of things. And to the point, um, uh, some other, uh, other neighbors have said, you know, why don't you just buy a site? Why don't you build the building? Um, I've been doing weekly searches in the marketplace, not just Farmington, but some of the surrounding communities. And there's not another location. And that's, that's not your issue, but as we think about it holistically, it's not that this is just the convenient one for us. We were looking for an area that was relatively safe, something that was approximately the right size, something that could be made to work. Uh, Paul is very enthusiastic about remaining in Farmington. And the economics just don't work for us to go out and buy thirty or forty acres and then start from the ground up. That just would not happen. And from Bethel's Rock, um, we've kinda maxed out what they can allow us to use. And they're more interested in being a church than a school, and and that's not a negative on them. They own the building. That's their worship facility. So for Great Oaks uh, to flourish in the community, which means that from an education standpoint, the parents has, has been um, offered up. If they want the option for a classical education charter school, um, this is the site. And so, um, it it would've been great for us if we had ten to pick from, but um, we don't. And so we're hopeful that this is approved. I think this young lady up here mentioned the parking lot and if he could do some things. I think this young lady up here mentioned the parking lot and if he could do some things. Wellington is buying the whole center. So if it's necessary and it's necessary for flow to make some adjustments in that parking lot, they own it, they can control it. And I know from many conversations with Steve Wellington, he's very concerned for the safety of the kids there. And he absolutely wants to do the right thing. So I just wanted to point that out. It's not that we're sitting here with a plethora of options. This is the best option that's available for the school. So we're sure hoping that it works for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, this is absolutely the final opportunity. I say that every time, but you know what? We're an open commission. If you have something, let us know. I mean, you still have time. All right, Mr. Richardson.
My name is Michael Richardson, 35 Elm Street. The problem is, and I, and I understand schools can go, this is a nice location. It's been sitting here for a number of years. I basically built this building. I started one up opening 27 years ago at the family Fred or Connell. I closed it down. I understand Hy-Vee, Aldi, that's under control. This property, and if, if people say, it's going to be known as Family Fresh, Family Fresh, we need a grocery store, we need this, we need this. Well, if they want this building, it's, and I know it's in bad shape. People say, well, the roof is bad. Tear it down, build a brand new school and get rid of it. And tell the people of Farmington, we don't want anything downtown. And I had a question on where is the garbage going to be? Garbage, garbage hoppers, if they're going to be enclosed, garbage going to be leaking out? We have a parking lot over by the train tracks, which is owned, two big dumpsters. Those things, couches, TVs, anything in that parking lot, people dump it. It's not secure. Where are these people going to go and pay the garbage? Is it going to be back at the store? Is Marsh going to look at it? We're going to look at it? I understand what the thing, is there going to be any landscaping to hide the neighborhoods from those windows? When little Joey and little Milwaukee sits on their desk and looks at our house and goes, you see windows? This is what you're talking about. The school's a great idea, but it's coming in to a neighborhood that we, we don't want to, we don't want to look in and go, hey Billy, hey Joey, singing in our backyard. The kids from the noise in the playground? We enjoy the kids from the playground. We have a park down the street. But is the dental office going to, or the closing center going to have clients coming in going, having Billy going, hit the ball? Yeah! You have 300 kids screaming in a playground. That could be a problem. Noise thing. The lady said you have black fencing on Elm Street between gymnastics. Those are two buildings, sidewalks. You're going to have to go all black six foot fence all the way around the whole property. And this could be really expensive, fencing it. Because we had our fencing done two years ago. It was $10 a square foot. It's up to $20, $30 a square foot now with the economy. I welcome this Great Oaks Academy to the neighborhood. They sound like good people. I have a question, and I, this could be a possibility. Are the kids going to have ear protections when they're playing outside and you got those trains coming by? Bah, bah, boom. People say, well, you don't listen. I live a block away and I can't even have a conversation with anybody till those trains go by. I'm 47 years old. My hearing's pretty good. You get kids thing, and that could be it. And the question I have, and I think you're going to have, people say, we listened to Zoom call and they says, we're going to put a football field in. Why can't you put a football field behind the store or behind the train tracks? Well, you could. Take up some parking lot, bring in some dirt, put it right in front of the businesses. You have an open lot right between the, where the garbage cans are. Put a football field there. Take some parking lot thing. And you say the drop off by the batting cage, has the batting cage been notified? Those spots are going to be filled with, where's the batting cage employee is going to park? There's a couple of them, but that could be an option too. So I want to welcome Great Oaks Academy to the thing. I know this decision's already been made.
No, Mike, Mike, you know, you, Mike, you know us better than that.
I, I know how it is. I know how it is, but.
Well, Mike, I, I want to go back. You know, you talked about, you know that building probably better than anybody else in this room.
Yes.
You worked there for so long. I talked to you how many times when I was down that story? You know, and I'm going to answer just a few of your questions and statements. I'm not even going to pose them. I'm going to say they're going to be good stewards. The garbage will be taken care of.
Yep.
The students will be taken care of by their instructors or teachers at school, you know? Yep, kids will look out windows, no doubt. You know, you and I both did it when we were in school.
Yep.
Things like that. You know, the train goes by a lot of schools and a lot of areas. Now that, that's going to be addressed. I already said I would support this.
Yep.
But it's not a done deal. There's five commissioners here.
Yeah, I know, and I understand, and we've known for years. How many fire escapes are there?
You know, that would be a code issue, Mike. You know, we're not.
I know, I know, but because, because one question I have is, is the upstairs offices going to, is that going to be just demolished? There is an offices upstairs.
You would know that. I've never been up there, but you know, we're going to let them decide the layout of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, and I'd like to welcome to the Farmington and it'd be nice to get some. And another question is a better lighting on the building? There's one light working on the whole onsite building, security. We tried it with famous, they said, well, oh, well, just the cops will, we can notify the cops. And that'd be a secure, that'd be architectural. So we want people to be safe. And someone said about first, um, personnel, you're trying to get across there? And even me, oh, you can wait 10, 15, 20 minutes. You have to clear, make sure it's cleared because cars are coming out that bridge at 50 miles an hour. And I've got stuck in the middle going, run.
Mike, I would offer that to any road in this community, to any road in any community. You have to be careful, you have to be safe. All right? So whether it be you, it's.
So I just want to, so I just want to.
It is every road, okay? You need to be safe. I agree.
Yeah, but, but you have little kids coming across.
Now, again, I will, I will. Mr. Elvey, please, Mr. Elvey. Don't yell from the back. Don't, don't, what's that?
I said, this is ridiculous. All the crap we tried to put in there, it shouldn't be there in the first place.
You got your opportunity, Mr. Elvey. It's Mr. Richardson's turn. Please be quiet, okay? Don't bother him.
Yeah, so I was just thinking about the kids and don't want to have another accident and.
I would agree.
And there's got to be, I know, markings online, but people don't stop on the markings. They go, phew. And I understand what the traffic and I said, well, we might just have to use the other driveway and find a better spot, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, have a good night. All right, I just want to conclude that the public input part of this hearing with that from the commission, I looked at motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second to close the public hearing. Call the roll, please.
Teske.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Plato.
Yes.
Francis Shelley.
Yes.
Winchido.
Yes.
All right, in front of the commission then is a conditional use permit to allow a school within a B2 zoning district. We have four contingencies, and I want to highlight those because they really have been the basis of our discussion. Again, it's, it's the approval of building and fire permits is deemed necessary to establish a use. That gets into some code issues that were brought up. The completion and submission of a traffic study to the city for the proposed use at this location. Again, I think from all the residents or the majority of them and all the commissioners, and I'll, I don't know who's doing that or who's in charge of it, if it's the architect, then we really want this done right. I mean, I, I wouldn't just look at number of cars that go by in a certain period of time. It needs to look at the quality of road, the quality of the roads that they're going there. It needs to look at sight lines coming out, especially if they're planning to put that, that playground that close. I mean, my thought is, can that be bumped back? Make it safe for the, the, the students there. That is your priority. So the traffic study, Tony, if you could please stay on that.
Absolutely.
For the community, for our residents, I'd appreciate that. A detailed plan for the playground must be submitted to the zoning offer for review and approval. This plus, this plan must detail the use of the area, fence height, materials, location of the bollards, and lighting that may be added to the area. Again, don't skimp on this either. It's your students, it's a safety. You have a number of parents here. You know, they say it's a great school, safe school. Keep it that way, please. And then one that's always in there, assigned permit shall be submitted and approved for the exterior signage. That's pretty much. You know, I would say if this is approved, welcome to our community. Be good to your neighbors. I know a lot of these people personally, this is a good area of our community. You know, they have high expectations and so does the city. So be good neighbors, please. With that, look for a motion.
Motion to close.
We already met close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion on the conditional use and the contingencies. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion for approval?
Yes.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion for approval and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Just one thing, Dirk, quick. With that regard, the traffic safety, Tony, can you just even seen, see about like signage out on the street? You know, the flashing lights, school and school zone, that type of thing? Just include that in the traffic study. That's it.
I think it should be all encompassing, don't you, Phil?
Yes, I, I do. I think, I think, I think the traffic study from what residents are saying is a little weak right now and, and it needs, needs to kind of pick up the game just so we all get on the same page.
We are putting a school on probably one of the busiest roads in our community. And it needs to be done right the first time. So there isn't a, a issue later on, I'll call it. So Tony, if you take that from the commission, we'd appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Roddy.
Yes.
Plato.
Yes.
Francis Shelley.
No.
Winchido.
Yes, welcome.
Yes.
All right, I want to thank the residents for coming out tonight. Again, it's always a pleasure when I get the opportunity to see and speak with you again. I'd like to thank the applicant. I'd like to thank the architects and everybody else that came. Your input to the commission is always essential. We listen and we hear you. So thank you very much.
We'll let, we'll let people empty before we jump into the next one.
That's it? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm fumbling with my pages. I, no, is that mine?
No, it's mine, but you can have it.
Oh, no, no. All right, we'll let the residents exit as they like. We have one discussion item that the commission will be taking up still. All right, thanks for staying with us. We appreciate it. Again, we have one discussion item. To me, it's probably a more difficult item on our agenda than our previous public hearing. It really is. This is acknowledgement of service for Commissioner John Francis Shelley. Tony, do you want to lead us off?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight is Commissioner John Francis Shelley's last meeting with us. He has been with the planning commission since 2010. So he's had 12 years of very reliable and good service to this commission. So with that, I would just like to wish him well on his future endeavors. He knows that he can always reach out to me and chat on bees and whatever other stormwater issues that you may have in your backyard. But with that being said, John, we do have a plaque here that I would like to present to you.
Yay.
It's been a pleasure, sir. It has. Thank you very much.
Hold on.
There you go.
Lawrence is not here, so I have to do her job for her.
There you go.
Do you, can you like hand him the plaque?
Oh, absolutely.
Receive the plaque.
Absolutely.
Thank you for taking it. John, do you want me to be long winded or do you want to be long winded first?
Go ahead, while I wipe my tears.
Well, we're certainly going to miss you. I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I'm disappointed that you're leaving the commission. You and I have worked together for a long time. You know, you've served the community for actually over two decades, both the planning commission and the HPC, and we appreciate that. Your knowledge of planning and design, in my opinion, is second to no one. So thank you very much. Personally, you know, having served for 12 years, I've become a good friend. You've become a good friend to me. I appreciate that also. When I look at your tenure on the commission, you ask the tough questions. You really do. You know, but you do it in a way that makes everyone feel comfortable. It's almost like you're having a face to face or a one to one conversation with whoever you're asking from our community. And I appreciate that. You'll be missed. You really will. I just want to wish you good luck with everything you do in your future. And thank you for serving our great community of Farmington.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to roast Mr. Francis Shelley?
I just want to say thank you, John, for serving the community as long as you have. And I've always enjoyed your point of view and perspective on everything and the history and knowledge you have of this community. So appreciate it. Thank you.
John, it's been great working with you here, gained a lot of knowledge from you, not only here, but in the professional job. So thank you. There's always bigger and better things to do out there. So good luck.
I wouldn't be here without you. It's been like 10 years. I'm serious. I applied for this commission in 2013 and I didn't get it. And I worked with you for three years in heritage preservation. I wouldn't have applied again if you weren't on this committee. So thank you, and I'm trying not to cry so hard.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all. I got a surprise call from a reporter wanting to know why I was leaving the commission. And it's like council, our elected officials have chosen a direction to follow and they have some other knowledgeable individuals that will help guide the commission into the completion of that. And I have no issues. I'm very comfortable with their decision. 12 years on the planning commission, the other remainder of my time in heritage preservation. I've learned a lot. And I welcome all of you to go and come visit with me anytime you have questions or just want to hang out or you need honey or something. But I have learned so much, not only in how to interact with the public and how to deal with the issues and having a say in the direction the community has been going. That's been my purpose and I'm glad that it's been fulfilled. I will miss you all and I thank you for your kindness and your support.
Well said. Katie, do you want to add?
John, I would be remiss if I did not speak on behalf of the council to thank you for your service. It is not, certainly not something that was unnoticed. When we do these boards and commissions, and I, I know I'm new blood and a lot of you have been here for many, many years, but when we do the interviews and we speak with all of you, these types of decisions are never easy. And I tend to be one that is very old school and I like keeping the knowledge on, on the boards. And so this was, this was a difficult one for me this year. So I just, I want you to even consider, and this is honestly from the bottom of my heart, consider what the heritage. consider what the Heritage Preservation Committee could look like, because I would really like to see it come back. I think there's a lot of projects, whether it be Park and Rec, or with the Rambling River Center, that we're seeing the need for the intergenerational education piece to come back to Farmington, and what better time to consider than our 150-year celebration? So I just want to propose that to you when you're out being a busy bee with your bees, right? No pun intended. That honey was delicious, by the way. My children very much enjoyed that, and I put it in my coffee every morning, so I may need more. But I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the Farmington City Council for your many years of service.
Thank you. If council or anyone else needs my assistance, all you have to do is ask, so.
Was there anything else from staff?
Just want to reiterate, thank you very much for your service, and it's been a pleasure.
Anything else from the commission? If not, I'll remind the commission and our viewers that our next regular meeting will be February 2022, and it's been customary since my time on the commission that the outgoing commissioner makes a motion to adjourn his meeting.
Remember, your next meeting is in February. Don't miss it. Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This commission is officially adjourned, thank you.